North Smithfield Town Council, February 22nd, February 22nd, 2022. Madam Clerk, we need to... ...of the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Your Honor.
Ms. Powell?
Here. Here. Yeah. Open for Zoom to round 042-46-66. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to be heard on the phone here? It's good. Thank you, Clifford, for the 49th last thing. I'd like to speak to first the veterans exemption that's not being rejected tonight. It's under the impression that it would be considering legislation until this is out. I had been able to do some research and collect data. We've been waiting for some information from the tax assessor regarding the tax levy and the tangibles appreciation and such. So we haven't done much other than I've conducted a survey of... I've conducted a survey of the tax assessors in the state. I know, you know, how often they change their exemptions and whether they decrease them or increase them, and at what point do they usually do that? And of the 17 responses that are done so far, there aren't many that have increased them somehow. Not a lot, and they usually only do it after the levy has been estimated by the tax assessor and before they set the final budget. Because the purpose, they usually also review it in the year that we have reevaluation because if the property values go up in town proportionally, you've got to make some adjustments to exemptions in some cases. So it's not done at this point in the year that I can find anywhere else, but I'd be disappointed if we didn't. However, what I've just passed out to you is I've been advocating that you give any further exemption based on financial need. If you're going to be increasing the exemptions, I am firm a believer that there should be some type of, that this test is to qualify financially. As I pointed out at the last minute, I gave you a lot of statistics I'm not going to repeat off tonight, but in December when I attended, it should have some ideas here. I did tell you that 26 communities in the state that have a circuit, they refer to as a circuit breaker tax exemption, meaning based on your income, your exemption increases as your income decreases. And then when they own it, there are 10 states that don't do that. We have one of the 10. So I think if you just look at them in general, that's where we have the greatest need, not giving one group exemption to be paid for by everybody else and not getting the exemption. So I felt like some people didn't understand or not, I wasn't being clear enough with how that impacts everybody else, but when you give one group an increased exemption, you're losing revenue. So the other part of the town who isn't qualified for the exemption, their taxes will automatically go up to make up for that lost revenue. So that's why it has to be done across the board with everybody at the same time so you can get parity, because you have no idea what the total cost of changing exemptions is going to be. So what I passed out, Mike, before I started speaking is, this I actually, I tried to portray at the last meeting, the need, and that there are people out there who have financial need in this town, believe it or not, and I think there are a lot of people who find it easier to appreciate that and understand that. I don't think you're going to have a lot of people who are financially hard up to come before you to beg for an increase in your exemption. Your pride prevents them from doing that. This is actually from a GoFundMe page, and this resident actually lives in the town of North Smithfield. I came upon it because his grandson Sean is the one who started the fundraising forum, and I knew him from the Barlow School, or I taught for a number of years. So this, now I'd like to read it for people who are at home listening to it, and this was written by Sean on the GoFundMe page for his father, who I won't mention the last name. The man knows this grandson is doing this, but I'd rather not mention the last name. My grandfather, affectionately called Bob at the Grandpa, was born on Socket, Rhode Island, longtime resident of Barlow, Rhode Island, and now resides in North Smithfield. He is a man that would help anyone in need and would never ask for anything in return. He is a member of the Navy serving, he was a member of the Navy serving in the Korean War. Waterman Lake, Riden Run Club, BFW in North Smithfield, BFW on Socket, and Ian Betts, I don't know how to pronounce that town, it's in Florida, if somebody does, that's fine, but it's one of those, you know, they never saw it, never been there. He was also a longtime employee of Tupperware, Slade, Rhode Island, and a manager at Amber On Plastics in Leventon, Nass. My family and I are asking for assistance, both from our family, friends, friends of friends, veterans, assistance partners, and the community to help us assist my grandfather during this difficult time. Any assistance, advice, and resources are greatly appreciated. My grandfather, an 87-year-old Navy veteran of the Korean War, is currently back to work because he has to, not because he wants to. We are currently assisting him with his search for more suitable work to make ends meet while receiving assistance from immediate family members. He has experienced extreme adversity these past few months following the passing of his best friend and brother, Richard Athlee, and they also served together in the Navy during the Korean War. He's also lost his son, his son, who served in the Army, and his wife in the past year. Since the grandfather has lost his relatives. Lost his son, he lost his wife, and he lost his brother. Despite these heartbreaks, my grandfather had renewed upbeat while trying to occupy his time with hobbies and surrounded by loved ones. After the passing of his wife, my grandfather soon discovered that life insurance was non-existent and an insurmountable debt came to light, all of which would be difficult to overcome while retired, forcing him to return to work. That's the type of man he is. If you dig a hole, you have to dig yourself out. That's his quote. I agree to some to an extent, but not when a man affected is 87 years old or war veteran, a man that has never asked help or help out, help out, but has helped anyone in need and truly deserves to be stress-free during this point in his life. My immediate family and I have mitigated the need, but the amount of debt is too much to bear. Our goal is to allow him to live stress-free during the remaining years, pay off debts in practice, prevent him from working because he has to rather than wanting to. I prevent him from working because he has to rather than wanting to, and to financially provide for prenation services for his recently passed wife. She died recently. Any sizable donation is greatly appreciated. If you're unable to make a donation, but that's some job opportunity suitable for an 87-year-old man that is capable of working, capable of outworking those who more than half of his age, please let us know as well. He is well-known for his handyman and custodial work, famous dish and chips during his time at the BFW, Liam Betts Kitchen, expertise in hunting, fishing, painting, appliance repair belt, and his exceptional conversational skills. We appreciate the time reading this post, may God bless. And on the second page are photographs of the 87-year-old man, proudly in his uniform, saluting the American flag, with his veterans cap on, and picture of him when he was in the service in the Korean War. His brother was in the Korean War also, I looked up his obituary online, brother was very distinguished, nice military career, son too was in the military. So I think this, believe it or not, exists in North Smithfield, and they don't come running here begging for themselves. So that's why I have been advocating for these people. I don't care to be taxed to give money, to pay more money on my taxes to give it to someone who is living in a beautiful home, has plenty of income, and doesn't need the handout. These people need the exemption, and they're one of 26 districts in this state that don't have the circuit breaker set scale exemption based on income, one of 26. 26 have it, with one of 10 that don't. I'm ashamed of that fact, I really am. And all of them have that, you know, the program that Mr. Zelinski was referring to, I know that, and he's done that for years, but it's a terrible program. It's not going to help anybody in maybe substantial way. This man no longer lives in his own home, and he's not in subsidized housing. And I did, to make sure this was legitimate, before I spoke on this, I called the grandson. I tracked him down, called him. Now, he lives out of state, he's boycotting things out of state because he's the most capable relative to be doing that, and I knew him from school. I trust the kid, that he's a nice, honorable kid, did a great job in school, athlete, involved in everything, tried his hardest all the time, went to college, made a success out of himself. But so it's not a scam, it's for real, and there are a lot more people out here. And Mr. Zelinski, when Mr. Alter used to come before the board, in his case, every year on behalf of people who were suffering financially, you and I used to have private conversations, and one of us thought that he had money because he lived in a nice house, and I thought he didn't have money because he didn't live in a nice house, but I knew he was more than just a killer.
I was in the emergency room.
Oh, I thought you started with me and said, oh, that beautiful house.
Oh, no, no, we're correcting.
Must be someone else then, must be someone else.
We track the state, please.
I know, I remember that call. Maybe you don't, I just, maybe I remember you.
You were serving on the Budget Committee from 2012 to 2015.
Right.
What did you do to facilitate some type of understanding of the significance of that?
We were asked to review it, and we did review it, and we came back to the committee and made recommendations that it was a monumental task, and we couldn't ask the Budget Committee to do that during budget season. You've been on, you've been on the board for, on how many years have you been on this board?
16 years.
Okay, 16 years. So you've had plenty of time to address it as well. All of a sudden, it's a four...
I'm in a position to address the numbers, but...
You were as a county president.
Let me, hopefully you can recall our conversations, either at my house or your house from 2012 to 2015, and say, Mike, why can't we do this? Just what you said, it was a monumental task, didn't it?
Yeah.
Okay. So now, the ball is in this council's court. We're presenting a tax, tax break for our veterans out of respect, and if you start putting circuit breakers on this, where is the respect for all the veterans? Where is it?
I think I have respect for veterans, and I said it the last week. I said, my father was a World War II veteran, served in the South Pacific Indian Break Board. I told you that at the last meeting, but I've also told you that it would fall to communist if I advocated for only giving poor veterans more money, and I'm also giving them exemptions, but it should be based on need.
You're not the only one who's...
The federal government is setting the care of the benefits package for the veterans. The state is now looking at enabling legislation to make the military pensions pension tax free from stating...
Pass that, Mr. Clifford, I could, do you agree that?
What's that?
You agree that state should make veterans pension...
I think it should be based on need, and they should do a bigger break for the needier veterans. Well, I agree the town power needed the $2,000 from the federal government.
So now, Mr. Clifford, you disagree?
All right, we all have been gray out.
Yeah, yeah.
I know, I'm a little tired of the accusations. Yaha, I got to my moments. Mr. Clifford is a very brilliant man. Why doesn't he help us directly sit down?
Paul, Paul, I had spoken up at every meeting, you don't even answer my emails when I send them to you, and every time I speak up, you totally ignore it.
That's not true, Michael, you asked for, I told you, I was...
When I asked why the MBF, when I asked why the MBF was meeting in closed session, I've got them all too, I've got everything. When I asked, when I asked for the, the, why, MBF was meeting in closed session for asbestos when you run the council meeting, you flinch, and now Kim's having a study done on the A problem, and I'm saying, well, why didn't they just go for those? There's been a million things that are approaching your attention, and you ignore them for the last four years.
Michael, if you wish to sit down and help us solve these issues, Michael is always open. You're looking for the hot moment, I can't converse with you.
No, I mean, I know, Paul, I can't converse with you.
All right, all right.
But this is, this is my point. I'm hoping that you can see there's a need, that these people actually exist, that they're not figments of our imagination, and that they need someone to advocate for them, and you are in a position to do that. So if you want to give everybody and their brother, like the state does, you know, an exemption and increase it, go right ahead, but I still think you should be not focusing on everybody, but on people who actually need the money. And I question, you know, even the whole concept is, we don't have a financial picture, and we seem to be moving forward. And again, I suggested, if you remember at the last meeting, as I've suggested other things in the past, like having an order to come in and check the tangible property values. Did I not make that suggestion to you many times?
Yeah, it's really...
Yeah, so I did suggest at that meeting that you try to coordinate with the cities within towns to have them form a committee, and every city and town can pay for it, to kind of look at the whole picture of exemptions and how there is or is not parity in certain cities and towns. And that's what needs to be doing this. It's not going to be Kim and I, it's, you know, if you're looking to do this right, it's a monumental task, and we had other problems at the time, Mr. Zelinski, regarding the abatement issue and the bond issues and the planning for state aid pullbacks to deal with, we had a lot on our plate, and there were recommendations in that Budget Committee report that we've given, that we gave, and nobody ever took up on any of them. We called for a long-term capital program, planning program, and we called for a number of things, because they're still on the page, and they're not paid out, nobody bothers. So, you know, I've come in here and I've made suggestions, and I've asked for things to be posted by a certain date, so we can study them beforehand. I have reassurances that they will be, and I'm not giving you that situation. So I'm not that trustworthy anymore, seriously, I'm not. And I have reason not to be. So I hope, instead of acting on this tonight, you consider this and focus on the truly need to be given this abatement. And thank you for trying to make me look like the communist like I predicted last week, because, all right, we're not going back to the board, we're not, it's gone on a little longer, right?
I should say, you predicted yourself, yes?
No, I said, I'm...
I'm sorry, you said you predicted.
Yeah.
Okay.
I said, I'm sure I'll be, and I was, thank you very much. Another question, when I came over this week to actually pay for an actary request, drop off a check, I saw the car of the parking lot that has the 40,000 license plate on. Did we buy a new top car for the town administration because it was not, not the old car?
You think he's in the road?
Do you agree?
I was in it the other day. He's definitely not in the road.
What is it, what car is that?
It's referred to as the lawmaker.
It's a big SUV, this is it.
No, that don't mean it's not administrative, it's 88,000 hard police miles on it.
It's a police car?
It's a, yes, it's a, it's the decommissioned police car.
Oh, okay, XOLOs.
It's a vehicle.
Are you...
No, no, I wanted to know, I wanted to know why, you know, did we buy something? Because I hadn't seen it.
Red dot, okay.
And I didn't recognize the vehicle.
Okay, thank you, Paul, just real quick, you asked a question last week, and I thought that would be back here.
Yeah.
There was $385,000 in the Hallwell account, right at the end? Was it 384? There's 385,000 in the Hallwell account, or was it 384?
For the decommission?
Yes.
It was 400,000, and we transferred, we had 400,000 from the bond, Mr. Clifford, and then we had transferred 66,300 from the reserve to help with the cause of the Hallwell project. We contracted 90,000 between the engineer and the architect and the mediator that's doing the study on the asbestos and so forth. So we have a balance of 376,137.
So you transferred money in from the regulation, town's general fund?
Yes, we did.
Okay, so that wasn't left over, and we added to it from what would be accumulated?
Correct. And the 400,000 probably a little bit more because it does earn interest.
I'm still waiting for one other answer from you, but I asked about something in writing from bond council suggesting that it is illegal to put all three, three options on the one-one ballot question, and you told me that you would get that in writing.
Well, I don't know about it being illegal or not, but a bond council advised against that.
Well, you said you were going to get something in writing explaining why.
I'll check with the, the solicitor on that ticket. Anybody else that would like to be heard on the forum? As in, in the building? DJ, is there anybody on Zoom that would like to be heard on the forum?
They would like to be heard during open forum, and the council chambers, please either turn your video on or unmute yourself and make it known. Nobody's responding, Mr. President, I would say go forward.
Are you lazy for Bacon Company? Okay, wait for you guys up front, okay? So we're going to move now, we're going to jump, we're going to go to new business C. Discussion by Council on other actions, or presentation by Bacon and Company, here ending 2021. General Levine, Order of Amendment. Do I enable that call? Yes.
Good evening, everyone. We should have the order report and two letters from us. So I'm going to do a brief overview of the order, and then if you have any questions, you can let me know. So basically, starting on page one is the audit opinion, which is an unmodified opinion, meaning the financial statements that are here, we presented in accordance with GAAP. Beginning on page four is management's special analysis, which was prepared by Cynthia, which is kind of like an executive summary of the order report, you want some summarized information, you can go there. The actual financial statements begin on page 13. So page 13 and 14 are your government-wide financial statements. They're, again, on a whole pool basis that we have these, so it includes all your capital asset, the debt, your pension, all of that type of thing. It's split up into governmental activities and business types, so governmental activities would be things like your general fund, capital project fund, special revenue funds, business type activities, or corridor sewer funds, so that's how it's broken out there. So towards the bottom of page 13, you'll see that the governmental activities ended the year with net position of 19.9 million. Of that amount, their unrestricted deficit is 17.3 million. The business type activities end the year with net position of 10.5 million, almost, and 3.2 of that is unrestricted. If you flip the page, page 14, this is the activity statement for the year, so towards the bottom of page 14, the governmental activities increased net position by almost 4.9 million, and business type activities increased net position by about 565,000. The next set of statements begin on page 15, the governmental funds. First, you'll see the general funds, and towards the bottom of page 15, your total fund balance for the year was 10.9 million. Of that amount, 7.8 million of that was unassigned. Next to that is the school unrestricted fund, dated to the year with fund balance of almost 2.3 million, most of which is restricted for education programs. And then the final column is the whole of your other governmental funds, so all your other special revenue and capital project fund. So those funds ended the year with a fund balance of almost 4.1 million. There's some detail towards the back, the report's outing on page 99, that it breaks out all the different funds that make up the other governmental funds, if you have any sense of that. On page 17 is the statement of revenues, the expenditure and changes in fund balance. So we can see the general fund towards the bottom of the page increased, sorry, increased fund balance by almost 2.2 million last year. The school unrestricted fund increased its fund balance by almost 1.1 million, and there was a decrease in fund balance in the other governmental fund of 770,000. If you go to page 19, this is your private hero funds, which is water and sewer fund. So the water fund ended the year with net position of 2.5 million, almost, of that amount, 312,000 were unstructured. Your sewer fund ended the year with net position of almost 8 million dollars, of that amount, 2.9 was unrestricted. If you flip the page, on page 20, did we operate the state for the year, so the water fund increased net position by 204,000, almost, and the sewer fund decreased its net position by 619,000. The next set of statements begin on page 23, charitable charity bonds, your largest fund, you can see the over trust bond, so it ended the year with 1.6 million dollars in net position restricted for... So then, starting on page 25, or the notes to the financial statement, there's a lot of information here, I'll just point out a couple that you may be interested in. On page 37 is note seven, which is kind of a concise summary of basically all of your long-term liabilities. So you can see your net OKEB obligation increased about 700,000 to 10.4 million, and your net pension liability increased by 179,000 to 26.4 million. Then it also has your bonds, different bonds, capital, these other things broken out between your governmental funds and then water and sewer. Then I'll also point out, there's a lot of information in the notes, I don't know if anybody has any particular questions or anything so far. So after the notes, there's a section of required supplementary information, so it's information on your OKEB obligations, your pension obligations, and your budget. So there's just some multi-year information here that you may find interesting on page one, you've got your old KAB 81 and 82. And starting on page four, sorry, 85 is your individual pension plan, so you have your teacher's plan, depends on how the liability gets built up, years, that type of thing. Page six, teachers' survivors, 87 is your general employees' plan, and 80 is your police officer's plan. So there's some multi-year information here that you may find helpful. On page 91 is the general fund budget to action statement. So if you look to page 92, you'll see that the general fund ended the year with a budgetary surplus of 1.1 million. And then right next to it on page 93, the school unrestricted fund ended the year with about 1.1 million budgetary simple. Starting on page 115, this is a single letter section, basically it has our opinions there. Yeah, on the, the 120, just to point out, there were no... Findings on the state water this year. Or the financial statement for it for this report. That was a very brief overview. Does anybody have any specific questions or another?
You know, I wasn't gonna bet it and take sure of next time, whether Joe, whether I'm here or not any year from now. We should make a point of getting away, get this up on the screen next time we we have this, so people in the audience. Next time.
I know.
Yeah. Anybody have any questions?
The proprietary funds?
Yes.
Specifically the sewer fund?
Yes.
The nine hundred thousand, that's the loans that we gave out to the homeowners when we did that sewer line on my family? Or on my brother's, should I?
Oh, we transfer out. So initially, there was a separate fund created for just that sewer assessment. And then rolled over, so those assessments have been put into just the sewer fund. Doesn't really make any sense to have two separate funds. So that was basically closing out that fund essentially. So it's not loans to, you know, customers per se, it's just the closeout of that fund consolidating one sewer fund. So the loans, you know, the receivables that are paid over twenty years are in the sewer fund, in the sewer assessment.
They are right into the private.
Yes, yeah, they're all in there.
Anyone? Second. Good job.
There's also a link to the letter, if any ever, if anybody want, have any questions on that. And then another letter that has required disloyal stuff.
Okay.
If you have any questions on that, we'll. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Now, I'm just taking some, we have the viewers, followers, I'm not criticizing them, just the next time. Thank you. Okay, so would anyone like to make a motion to accept this into the record?
President, I make a motion to accept the annual financial statements for this year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty, today by.
Thank you. For a second, second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. This is special by council on other action on payment of bills. Special council on other action on town council budget transfer from use of police computers to payers. So we look at in the packet, there's a request transfer. It's not really a transfer, it's basically just renaming the account from a you know, from the computer account into a taser. Basically, we want to rename the account or transfer it openly. That's the same exact amount, like twenty thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars from the computers, the twenty thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars for the purchase of payers. So their motion to accept this transfer?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the transfer in the capital account from the most secure police department on the computers who moved into a line of notifications in the amount of twenty thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars.
Thank you, for a second. Thank you. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Now, going back to the bills, if anybody had anything to do with like that, so on the bills and discuss. I'm attending and. Okay. Okay, now, I want to get a little group.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the payment of bills in the total amount of two million, seven hundred and one thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and ninety-four cents.
Motion, for a second. Second, second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Especially my council on other action, I will consent agenda. All items listed in this section, I consider them one motion. There'll be no subsequent discussion of these letters and of the council's own request. In which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda. Does anybody have any others they'd like to remove from the consent agenda at this time? Here and now, I want to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. So you for a second? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Welcome, do anybody get back to you on that? Give the word to all business. I can search my council on other action, update the invisible review task force.
Yeah, this is one of the phone numbers, which he usually is on his own. Yeah, so I don't see him.
Oh, is there anything?
We have a meeting Tuesday at that time. Actually, the council, yeah, I'll give you the number coming forward.
Especially my council on other action, I update that I have a wall of review committee. This is overall, and I think at this time we're gonna get move up new business D. That's what relation. We're ready to take.
We have, we have not been since prior to the last town council meeting. So we are meeting on the week next Thursday. So it is, it is, one of the things that I know was pending was having the councilor revise the hello review committee resolution, which I know that's, I know we sent us a copy of that, so maybe I won't just redo it, and then once we do that, then topic of discussion, I think that title. Yeah, and that invoice, that is, I believe that would market as being paid in full at this point. Their entire scope of work has been completed.
Okay.
Although, you know, you could make the case, there were, you know, some things that that we wish were were different as far as what they were providing. But as far as the scope of work, everything has been completed. So we're recommending, or we're recommending the town council today's payment was as has what's, what the balance is left. Yeah, so as it states here, the outstanding total for this invoice that they're recommending that we we paid is twenty thousand, eight hundred, ninety-two dollars and twenty-five cents.
And that's the name?
Yes, that's correct. I made a motion to, to approve the Western and Sampson invoice. Invoice number one zero two one zero eight zero six. Dated October eighth, twenty twenty-one, for the amount of twenty thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty-five cents.
That's a motion, that's a motion, you have a second on that?
Second of the discussion. If you look at the double letter, they have a different chairman of the, I will review committees recommending a different number. And on the back page, it explains, like, why the difference on the number. That was not where they had held back, but that we paid. Something suggesting that maybe that invoice plus what we then withheld from previous invoice. The total would be twenty-one thousand, one hundred and forty-two thousand, fifteen cents according to the memorandum from Western Sampson, a recommendation from Mr. Ford.
Uh, I would first, the, I don't, separate invoice indicating that that, that what that number is lost, or we do not. Do you think there should be a separate invoice indicating that? Or at least itemize? On this current invoice?
You could, Mr. President, if I may, to Jeff, you could, you might, the, you do have two letters there.
Yeah, okay.
We look at the date from Western Sampson, which is October eighth. At that point, they were asking for twenty thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five. I guess, so I can't report it up there. But certainly, if I was in Sampson, I would like to have the twenty thousand. If there's any additional, we have a thousand dollars. A thousand, two hundred and forty-three.
Yeah, so, so, a separate invoice.
Really?
Yeah.
Solicitor, any of those, it's, but it's in top of the best sort.
It should be the.
Yeah, I don't, his name's not on there.
We just have somebody who just postponed, and he was saying, that's an explanation for the activities, so we don't actually pay him.
Yeah, what I could, I could, I could double check with, with the chairman and have him regen the Western Sampson, and have him itemize that as most as opposed to just the amount of twenty thousand, they were more explicit.
Yeah, itemize it against another separate invoice. Yeah, okay.
I mean, in this number, they're saying that they're still, I mean, eight oh six, they overbilled one hundred and ninety dollars, so.
Read this. Invoice number eight two one oh nine through three, they have billed it to twenty-six, five, forty-one, fifty. For whatever reason, however, we recommend it for lower number. So we had a balance on that invoice. I'm not, I'm trying to just clarify where it was wrong. But we have, we have an invoice of one number, you know, recommendation of a different number, and I'm just saying where you're getting the number from. I don't recall the whole thing, I mean, honestly, I think we're back in the.
Yeah, I'm just saying, this cover page here says, please note invoice one zero two one zero, eight oh six, overbilled account by a hundred and ninety dollars and ten cents. So that was being twenty-two, one thirty-five, twenty-one, nine forty-two. Maybe we could just have a way of solution.
All right, we'll just hold off on that and stand.
Yeah, it's fine, yeah, I can, I can ask them to contact Western Sampson, get it, get it over with, sorry.
Yeah, we, we draw the line.
Yeah, I'm gonna draw the second.
I'm gonna draw the line.
And I withdraw the motion, all right.
That's all, we're gonna wait. Thank you. New business A, discussion by council on other action on resolution of the town of Los Smithville, requesting the general assembly to adopt House Bill H dash seven one four three and Senate Bill S dash two zero five nine, amending Rodan General Law forty-four dash three dash four veteran exemption in Rodan General Law forty-four dash three dash five gold stock parents exemption. This is Alinsky, you want to discuss this?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to compliment the tax assessors, Jen Park, who did a lot of work on this, looking into the amounts. Also, Solicitor, any of those, if they're commensurate on the resource, Jason and Jen Park, like some of the things that Solicitor, those he pointed out. So the taxes have been frozen since nineteen eighty-six. That's when the current town council at that time adapted a prisoner of war exemption of fifteen thousand dollars exemption on real property, which is approximately two hundred and sixty-five dollars. Very close to what we proposed there, been frozen. It was last approved in nineteen eighty-three. I have a bunch of, I think, just by a hundred seconds, you'll have here this. So in nineteen eighty-three, the town of Los Smithville requested the general assembly pass a state law, a specific North Smithville, allowing the town to adopt an ordinance to freeze veterans exemptions at the nineteen eighty-two rates as follows. Veterans forty-five dollars and fifty cents, little veteran forty-five dollars and fifty cents. Disabled veterans ninety-one dollars and gold stock parents sixteen dollars and twenty-five cents. So we've been in a state of frozenness since nineteen eighty-three. And that's why the support before the council for their consideration to acknowledge veterans for this service. It's funny.
Just, just to be clear, what we're working on tonight is not approval of any tax break or anything for the better. It's just, that will come later, this is approval, roll call it, with, with the House and Senate.
Yes, those, those House bills which are part of it, which is House Bill H seven one four three and Senate Bill S dash two thousand fifty-nine. So as far as senators, Senator De La Cruz, De Alino, and Murray, involve were gracious enough to sponsor this, and as far as representing state friend, you are represented and House representative. So we have the numbers, and if the council agrees this evening to submit this, then it will be.
And then it'll come back and watch for the rest in discussion.
It'll come back.
Okay. Do you have any questions, Mr. Alinsky?
President?
Yes, please. If one from up? Thank you.
As I have come before you, before I applaud the town council, Alinsky, for looking into this. As Post Commander of the Paracitic Asset Post here in North Smithville, six three forty-two. We're encouraged by what we see across the nation, nationally and at state level. Where politicians are looking at we have recognized veterans more. At the national level, they are looking at compensation rates that they have had from the sixties that for disabilities our veterans have received from Korea, Vietnam, and Iraq, or the Bayesian Orange and so on, that those ratios with the compensation are might be too low. So they're looking at that, in fact, in the national edition, which I will be attending in July. There's going to be a workshop and discussion of that compensation ratio that we looked at. At the state level, as has been pointed out, our governor is looking at do suspension of the tax for the veteran pensions. And that's a very big thing. We have a lot of veterans that are in nursing homes, are living on their pension, that's all they have. And so, you know, this, this is a big plus for them. And we have over, I think, two hundred people that want to wire up the state house to help by the governor to bring that legislation up. Looking at my record, we have about sixty BFW members here in North, that are registered in North Smithville. But they're not all here. A lot of those that are in nursing homes are in hospice, you know, eighty-seven-year-old Korean veterans, we have quite a few of those. We have a lot of veterans in the town who are not members of the BFW, but I know quite a few of them that are veterans, but they're not in the BFW, and they could benefit from this budget. So again, I applaud you for taking this, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you.
Since. The towns, state centers and representatives. If I may slightly, just to address some questions that we. If I may, just to try to address some questions that may arise. When you read, it goes back to the Spanish American law. World War One, it names all the conflicts. It starts with the Gulf conflicts. It also, but what it does include is also Cold War veterans. But there's a line in here, in case anybody's worried about those that served admirably in the Afghanistan conflict. So if I may read the line before it, it's kind of lengthy, but it, it flows. It's very lengthy, let me just skip this. Or in any conflict or undeclared war, and who was honorably discharged from service, or who was discharged under conditions. That was not discharged under conditions, either they're not decedable. So it does cover the Afghanistan conflict.
Well, I'm sure you agree, we own these people that, that we got to test.
I do, Mr. President.
I will understand, I'm wanting to approve the resolution. Requesting the general assembly to adopt House Bill H dash seven one four three and Senate Bill. S dash five oh nine, amending Rhode Island General Law forty-four dash three dash four veteran exemption. And Rhode Island General Law forty-four dash three dash five Gold Star Parents Exemption. You want to make that motion?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we, that we authorize and sign the resolution. Town of North Smithville requesting the general assembly to adopt House, House Bill H dash seven one four three and Senate Bill S. Dash two zero five nine, amending Rhode Island General Law forty-four dash three dash four veterans exemption. Rhode Island General Law forty-four dash three dash five Gold Star Parents Exemption.
Thank you, the motion will be on the second. Any discussion?
Just on the discussion, just like you said earlier, all this is, is giving us, it's getting enabling legislation that will allow us to go back and revisit this. Without this, we can't even revisit or change the exemptions and how it's worked, because right now, it's branded as a, an exemption. Not as a credit, that would be the change of credit, actually a credit only tax. That's, that's how we, that's how we've been treating it, but it's not how it's worded, it's all, that's part of the whole process. But we need the enabling legislation to go back and redo it. That's all we're doing, Mr. President.
And brothers and gentlemen. Roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Paul.
Yes. 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 Thank you. Discussion by council, what other action and the pages.
The supplemental this month, I have six hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-one cents.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the supplemental. In real estate, where the vehicles annual. Fifty-four dollars and ninety-one cents for recommendation for tax assessment.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 And then I have abatements this month, a hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Motion, roll.
Mr. President, I make a motion if we approve the abatements. From real estate, one of the commercial property amount of one hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty-seven cents, recommendation of the tax assessment.
Second. Roll call, please. Yes. Yes. Yes, thank you. And my council, what other action on penalties and tax adjustment, Mr. Hayes.
Reminding the town council to approve a, a tax adjustment in the amount of two hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety-one cents.
Thank you, motion approved or request?
Mr. President, I make a motion based on the recommendation of finance director that we approve penalty adjustments in the amount of two hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety-one cents.
For the second. Okay, roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. That is in there? Okay, so my council, what other action on top projects and planning. This is just something I request and require the agenda, just to give us a quick update, but. It'll feel familiar right now, I had a couple of questions. Mr. Hayes, or is that not the name of the stress out? Starting with the question that I had was, what municipal projects are financed over time? Town and school side. So if you look at the handout, I guess, I already see. So if you look, we currently have, we have some debt that is going to be retired in the near future. But right now, we are paying out, that's if you tell me where I go wrong, you need to cheat, right?
Are we doing projects or debt?
Right now, I'm doing what we pay out annually.
Okay.
Yeah, so, right, so we pay out currently four million, one hundred sixty-six thousand eight hundred eighty-seven dollars a year. Between the schools and the bottom, right? Yeah.
For fiscal, for fiscal twenty-two, yes, President.
Okay, so now that you got that prior, then the annual amount that we pay. So would be.
That is still being.
Sorry, sorry, you're right, you're right.
That's principal and interest.
Correct, okay.
I just want to know that. The one that is, that's refund, the school general obligation bond, that just got retired in October. So that one hundred and ninety-three thousand eight hundred and fourteen no longer permanent for the upcoming year. This was based on what we're being, so that would be in the budget for next year, with that.
So we'll do another one that was retired, so.
Yep, the general obligation open space bond. Is three from the bottom, the annual amount sixty-three thousand three seventy-five, that will be retiring next December on twenty twenty-three. So that will bring up about two hundred and fifty-something thousand a year in bond payments. In upcoming years.
And the middle school will be retired. Twenty twenty-eight.
Yeah.
And we pay two million dollars here on that, two million one hundred fifty-four dollars. So now if you look, I just took, take some notes. We have. We have things that are coming up that need to be done. If anybody wants to jump in here, feel free, we have things that are coming up that are non-negotiable, I think, we have to, we have a rebound coming up. We have a police contract that we have to deal with. We have an EMT increase, that increased demand of EMTs, we'll be just gradually increase the amount of EMTs over the course of the next four or five years. And we have the reevaluation coming, and also the demolition of Hallawell, I think. Anybody have anything to add to that, or they think something shouldn't come off that? And then we have. Items that we have been discussing, that are not, are not officially, have not been approved yet, we have a police section that we're discussing. Seeing center, open space, and then the Hallawell project.
Nine four million dollars of roads that were made before.
No, these are not, those are, those are happening, those are in the budget, Rover cares for the budget.
John.
I'm not, this is a little bit, this is a little bit more. But if anybody would like to add that it's on the council, like I said. I'm open to, hear what anybody has to say.
Just, just a reminder, I'm sure the council knows the word, this, we have a four percent cap on, so. Those are how we approach these. And as our finance director pointed out to me today, eighty percent of this, this eighty cents. So we, we do have. Lots of things to keep in mind when considering this project. That's just.
So my point of bringing this up was just kind of discussion. And if, you know, to be able to understand where we are, what we have, what position the position that we're in. And what we have coming. On the fight, so.
We're retiring a lot of debt too. In twenty twenty-six, you retire three and a half million dollars of debt. In, in May of twenty twenty-six, and June of twenty twenty-six, you're, you're retiring seven point three million dollars of debt too. Ten point eight million dollars of debt, and ten point nine million dollars of debt when you retire.
Thank you, that's exactly what I wanted to discuss, right?
And just looking at the last, just looking at the next four, four or five years. Like what. Like what Paul just said, I mean, there's going to be a significant amount of debt that's going to be retired, and that's not even including. In twenty twenty-eight, just a few years after that, that the. Middle school, two point one million will be retired as well, so. Yeah, I think it's gonna, it, it, from, from that standpoint, I think it's gonna put us in a good, in a good position. To continue to do other things. As opposed to just adding more debt on top of debt that's. If they're where close, the next five years have been retired, I quote, yeah, that, that's not what this is saying.
Thank you. Anything else, anybody want to add? All right, I was just, for information purposes, if somebody else has anything to add. I guess that's it. Was there some kind of announcement that I was supposed to make? Oh, yes, thank you, so I'm going forward now with the government's executive order. Yeah, so going forward, the government executive order, I'm gonna go back to the word before the Omicron variant struck. And so the council meetings will be live streams, but they will not be on Zoom. And that goes for the plane and drone, they will be live hearing, they will not be on Zoom. Back to, at the next meeting.
We accept from May nineteenth. March nineteenth, March nineteenth, February, we accepted it last week?
No, it's February. That's May. May, like May.
I don't even, when he met, he put out his new one just last week. It pushed it to May, I mean, to March, it pushed it to March. Could have been mistaken, I can't, I can't have either of that, so I can't do that.
Do you want, I can, I can address that, so. And people can hear me, since I'm right in front of the computer. The, the executive order that was extended last week until March, the very last line says that. Public bodies have the option to offer remote access, but it's not mandated. So it is an option, because right now, it, it's a violation of my, OMA for not having remote access. It's just given the opportunity to have remote access, but it's not mandated by any boards or commissions.
Council President, do I need these five points? To mind, I'm sorry, well, I can read.
Council rules regarding Zoom meetings. The council will discuss procedures that will be enforced as follows, participants once a ten meeting in person to public comment. Live streaming by Zoom will be available. Yeah, what's that? Says live, oh, no, live stream, right, that's Zoom, sorry, live stream, it says via Zoom, but that's not the case, right?
No, it's YouTube, it'll be YouTube.
Live hearing via YouTube. Will be available for town council meetings, building, and, and Tony meetings, plenty board meetings, and however review committee meetings only. All of the boards and commissions or committees will be in person only, no live streaming will be allowed. Zoom will be available for live streaming only, no comments will be allowed. That's not Zoom, it's going to be YouTube. If technical difficulties occur, live stream, the above specified meetings will resume as scheduled. Oh, yeah, as everybody, we also, that's next fifteen. And that's what, we have a joint meeting with the school today. At six forty-five, they're gonna do their meeting first, and they're gonna wrap it up at six forty-five, and then we're gonna. Can we all do a turn at the start? I think we want you to return, all there.